Hello there, I'm Mark A Davis and I'm back. I took a, I took a couple of weeks off from doing this. Um, you know, I had some, some friends of mine fill in, but you know, I'm back and I, I got a couple of things to say. Um, and I, this is guy that I was reading about, his name was Cyrus the Great. I don't know if you ever heard of him. But apparently he did some shit back in the day in old Persia or how I like to call, it's like what's called Iran. I like to pronounce Iran, Iran because I'm cultured like that. And I, I just want to talk about a little something there about how, uh, if greatness truly uh came to us Americans and there's like a really great person that ought to rule us all, who ought to be king, our ceremonial monarch, if you will, that represents us, our mascot. Um, we wouldn't know what to do. We wouldn't, we don't know what greatness is anymore. Um, we can only quantify in sports terms, but that's because we only put our, our actual brain effort into sports. But what is a great guy now? Um, we like Cyrus the Great, what would he be now? Like he's known for being a usurper that uh overthrew the Medean empire and uh, you know, started the kingdom empire. He conquered like a lot of lands from all the way from the Endus River Valley, all the way to the Mediterranean. He was on the, on the fucking front doorstep of uh, of the Greek empire. You probably know this because you're probably a history guy who plays Hearts of Iron four. You think you're smart because you play video games. You're probably one of those types of people, right? But who, who is a, who are conquering guys? Uh, we don't really have any, you know, we lose a lot of wars. Wars we do win is like where the bad guys, where the Nazis um, uh basically in, in most of the paradigms of the wars we're in. So it's like, how do you, how can you see somebody's great? It's just like vibes. Like how is everything is vibes based, everything is fucking, I just don't understand as what I'm getting at. Um, it's like, what am I supposed to look up to? Who's the role models in our society? Not just in the political sphere, but at all. Like the only uh role models are as athletes, but that doesn't fucking work because not everyone's fucking six eight and 300 pounds, you know? It's just odd to me. I would like to have some sort of a dialogue on this. I know this topic has been tackled so many times, especially around uh like conscious black folks on YouTube, so-called conscious black folks. Um, to talk about how these kids don't have role models, but it's general for all ethnicities in America. There's no venerable man unless you delude yourself, you know? I don't know. Who are my role models? I don't know. I had a father that uh was a drug guy and got divorced from my mom when I was seven. And my mother is uh, like she can't be a role model because her life to me is undesirable. I wouldn't want to live her life, you know? Not she's a bad person or anything, it's just that. Uh, you know, you would have someone that you would want to emulate their success. And all successes that she had was creating me. Yeah, I mean money or whatever, but it's mostly creating me. And I'm a hunk of shit. So I can't look up to that. Anyone that produces me cannot be a role model in my opinion. So my whole bloodline's kind of fucked on that one. But besides that, I always grasp that who I wanted my role model to be. Uh, yeah, sometimes it was athletes like LeBron James, but that doesn't fucking work because I'm not a basketball guy. I tried being a basketball guy. It sucked, it hurt and I quit after one season. Uh, definitely couldn't be a football guy because that hurts even more. Um, and you can't, I looked like, I was like a, I, I fancied myself a, a, a junior amateur military history guy when I was in high school uh and somewhat in college. Is, because you know, I watched a lot of videos basically and looked a lot of maps. I thought, yeah, that's history. That's, that's military history. Even though it's not, there's like the two least important things is like the fucking map and knowing the names of generals and shit. The most important thing in war is having those fucking people skills, be able to emote uh and communicate and do that thing that Italians do with their fingers. Do that at people and they get it. You know, it's, it's all about body language. It's about getting to know who your generals are, who your officers are, the chain of command and how to communicate around that and when it's avert that, when to, when to go outside your doctrine. And so it's a people thing, you know? What gets the people going? What's, what's the times that we gotta exploit? You know, the fact that we got high morale right now? Should we attack? Should we maintain the vibes? If, if we have fucked vibes, we gotta not fight right now because y'all gonna want to kill y'all. So yes, that type of thing. It's, it's a, it's a vibes uh and communication type of thing. And in most, and like it's odd because most military like guys are into military history would not, they have no like people skills outside of like, no, I just don't have any. I mean, some do, but it's very, it's not that many people. It's like Julius Caesar is like the exemplar of what like I'm talking about. Cause he was like charismatic and smart and sexy and like you have, it's just so odd that people who study history now or military histories, I should say now are like the opposite of that. I don't know. That's an observation I had on the side there. Um, what else was I, what else was I thinking about? Oh yeah. So a little bit there had my role models Dwight Howard just because of the, his, his shoulders alone. And I felt like it's when he was on the magic, I thought, I thought he was just a cool guy. But he treated Stan Van Gundy, Gundy kind of shittily. Um, but whatever. He didn't handle that correctly. And then he went to Lakers and he got blamed for everything, even though it was not his fault. Um, you know, it was, it wasn't a good team, wasn't real, a well, well put together team. Kobe, Wade Patis prime. Uh, I think that team had Steve Nash on it. He only played 12 games or something like that. I think he broke his back that season. Yeah, it was just a bunch of past their prime players or about to retire players. And then the only, the only great player who was still in his prime was Dwight Howard. And then, okay, let's blame him then. Why isn't he averaging 35 points and 15 rebounds? It's because he never did that before. He was averaging 25 and, and 13 with two blocks. It's like, I don't know. It, it made me feel, I saw, I mean, there's a lot of things in my life that give me that feeling like, okay, I'm not living in the same reality as everyone else. Uh, which hurts even more when you don't have a role model or a person to tell yourself to, to humanity. Because it feels like you're so separate from it. Everyone's lying to you. Um, I mean, at least not intentionally. And that's just an example, but just petty things like that in sports. That's why I had to stop keeping up with it and stops keeping up with the sports media because it's like, I feel like I'm not watching the same thing that the media is telling me uh what it is. Like, I don't know. Um, same thing could go with history, but I'm not going to talk about that right now. Uh, who's another role model I had? That I tried to model myself after. I don't know. I don't really like people, I guess. I just try to cobble pieces, admirable traits of different people and some personality, but all that shit withered away a couple of years ago. It's like, when I moved in to my first, my own apartment and I started to like be on my sofa a lot more. It's like all this affectation with their away. And all these fake desires I had with the way and to the point that I don't even know what I want anymore past certain point. And what I want with my life, what I want to do with my career, what is going to happen to me? It all makes me very anxious. But not in a paralyzing way as before. Before, you know, high school, early college, you have this paralyzation thing of like, there's something that I want to do and it's something that people are saying I need to do. And societal pressure bucking up against me, but when the societal pressure is gone, who is there? Cause I was defined by that for so long. And it's time for me to be my own man. What does that even mean? Um, that's for many people, it's just whatever the easiest, most accessible thing is. And that's always dangerous in America. Cause the easy, most accessible thing can be the most dangerous thing. Um, and the most addictive, the most life draining. And I just feel like I've read too much, heard too many stories for me to go down the same road. And that's why, that's my point is I guess I'm getting to is that if I had, if there was a Cyrus the Great type of guy, I would probably, uh, you know, I'd probably like uh hang out with that guy, tell him that you should go get it. But I just feel like everyone I see that I talk to, they're just on fucking autopilot. I don't know. I originally had a point and I'm forgetting what it was, I guess. And this is another thing I've been thinking about. This is more like a contemplation episode. I, I, I tell you some things I've been thinking about. Another thing I've been thinking about is how I hear so many stories over like the past six years. Of people talking about how, oh, I had a weird Uber driver. She was a, she was a peanut butter eating conservative witch. Um, who loves scat play. It's like, how many types of those stories I'm going to hear from all these different people? Like at some point, they're not weird. They're just, they're just Americans, you know? They're just us. Like all these people are doing weird shit. Well, at some point, you know, if you think that it's just like such a, so many people that you can't be like, oh, isn't that weird? It's not like, um, I don't know. It just seems weird to me that we make so, like so much of social media or maybe it says more about me than, than social media. But I just, I just feel like I see so much on social media or in general conversation of wanting to like other people for being weird in like a not a criminal way. And then they act like, like, don't you realize that pretty much everyone in this country is a slightly different version of everyone else? Some people are a little bit more, I mean, it's all, it always comes down to circumstances you're brought into. Like there's very few unique people here. Um, and it's just a shame to me that when there is someone unique a positive way, they don't get their shine. Cyrus the Great wouldn't get his shine. Let that man usurp. If that, if you see it, Cyrus the Great, let that man usurp. Like what, what are y'all doing? You know, say, ah, he, he, he got ADHD. No, he's getting his mind prime. So when he turned 20, 20, whatever, he's usurping. So. And it's just like, what, what do we fucking value? Do we value somebody who got go-gettingness, situativeness, you know? Um, thick cock energy. I, I don't know if we do. I don't think Joe Biden has a thick penis. He might have a big, a long one, but it's not thick. Uh, we, we know what Donald Trump penis is like because that, because that uh, that whore. Um, Ms. Daniels described his penis. It's not a good one. Sort of, sort of like my penis. Um, anyways, Barack Obama, you know, he don't have a thick penis. He doesn't have the build for it. He has, he probably has a nice six and a half long. But it's not, it's not thick. Um, George Bush, again, he probably has a shrimpy. These people don't have impressive penis. They don't have, you need width. That's important. Give me five and a half foot thick. We're in business. We're, we're doing damage. We're pleasuring the women and men. We're doing whatever, whatever, whatever you're into. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that's what I'm into. I'm asexual. Um, yeah, they call me ace down at the fucking bathhouse. Um, anyways, Bill Clinton. That guy seemed like he has, has, he has a thick piece, but in America, you might be well endowed. But look at Bill Clinton, he used his powers for evil, used his power for evil. Maintain the horrific Yeltsin administration in Russia and had sex with all them children of Epstein. Uh, killed all those people in Haiti. Um, and his bitch wife uh over, over through Gaddafi and basically brought back slavery in North Africa. You know, it's not cool. He uses, he uses thick penis for evil. So, so it's not just a ability. It's not a meritocracy problem. It's also just a straight up just structural uh like problem in general of what, what society wants. You know, it's not just that, it's not fair. The standards aren't fair is that the standards are fucked in the first place. You know what I'm saying? They want evil guys, you know? We can't have a Julius Caesar no more. You know, we can't have a, a strong silent type like Gary Cooper no more. It's just, it's just guys who are loud mouths and, and dickheads and liars. And you can have one of those traits, but you can't have all of them. Like it's fine to be racist. But if you're racist, racist and violent, okay, what, what are we going to do about that? Cause if you're just violent, okay, do MMA. If you're racist and violent, what you gonna do? What you gonna do? You gonna be, gonna be like, you just gonna be like a Nazi guy planting nail bombs in front of black churches. Uh, church is chicken or a Baptist church. You know, either one. You get a lot of them in the church is chicken, honestly. But please don't do that. But that's what, that's, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Uh, you can't, you can't be having all these traits. Um, because what else I saying? I ain't forgot what I was saying. Um, oh yeah, it's fine to have one bad trait if you combine them like uh, what's it called? A Voltron? Most presidents are like a Voltron of bad traits. And that's how they, that's how whoever has like the most powerful fucking whatever that's called. Is that a call of Gundam? Well, it's called a Voltron. Whoever had the most powerful guy, you know, that asked the person who uh rules and then they fuck up the whole world. You know? Um, what else can I talk about? Ah, man, my balls are feeling pretty small today. Um, so how y'all doing? This is live by the way. So I could, I could see when you comment right now, I know it doesn't seem like there's a chat, but we are live. We're live from um, we're filming this in Secaucus, New Jersey right now. And uh, yeah. So if you, if you want to say hi to uh, to whoever, whoever you know is Secaucus, I'll, I'll go run up to them. I know there's like Skyrim gameplay going over this right now, but I'll go, I'll go to your friend's house in Secaucus and I'll talk to them. We'll say hi, we'll chill, we'll hang, we'll, we'll smoke a fake weed together on, on uh, on stream. Uh, anyways. So Cyrus the Great guy, the reason I wanted to talk about him because he had this um, he had this uh, this, I saw this article and it says Cyrus the Great fascinating facts and accomplishments. You know, obviously he founded the, the first Persian empire, all that shit, then the kingdom empire. Um, we'll see here. What I want to say, his early life, um, it shrouded in myth and mystery. He was born sometime around 600 B.C. on the son of Cambyses, the king of the Persians and grandson of Asta, Astagius. King of the Medean empire. According to legend, Astagius was warned as serious prophetic dreams that Cyrus would one day supplant and kill him. Astagius uh ordered his top general Harpagus to kill the child. Instead, Harpagus had Cyrus spirit away to live as a shepherd. At the age of 10, Cyrus came to the attention of Astagius after beating the son of a nobleman who refused to obey his orders. Uh, after interviewing the boy and his adoptive parents, Astagius discovered what had happened. Cyrus was sent back to his parents. But the son of Harpagus was executed and served to his father at a banquet as retribution. Tasty. His son probably tasted good, but when you got, when he, when he was probably halfway through his son's thigh, uh, you know, Harpagus was probably like, damn, you put that extra seasoning in it? Y'all put that human in it? And no, we put that human in it, bud. That's your son. That's, that's, that's Giuseppe right there that you eating. And Harpagus was like, what? Am, am I smoking some, some of that, that dank stank? What are you, am I hearing you right? Am I hallucinating? And no, no. And then, then uh, what the fuck? Astagius was like, nah, we killed your son. Uh, and then we smoked them. And then we served them up, no seasoning, no nothing. That's just how he tasted. I don't know. You were probably feeding them good. And then Harpagus was like, yeah, I was feeding them pretty good. Hey, what the fuck? You feed my son to me? This is some fucking bullshit. All this because I tried to save your son. Are you gonna kill your own baby? You know, you do a little, a little fucking uh 24 month abortion on your fucking son? Who cares if a little, a little dream you had, say he was gonna kill you uh when he turned 20? What I gotta do with me? I'm not gonna, I'm not going to do this, do your orders unquestionably if it involves me killing a baby. And Astagius was like, uh, well, you ate your son. So this is, this is guy that's kind of over with, you know? Um, other sources describe Cyrus living at the court of Astagius as the son of a poor Medean family before being returned to his parents. Sometime after his return, Cyrus married Cassadane, Cassandane? I don't know. And a cave Meadean and the great love of his life. Okay. So we'll, we'll stop there for now. How much time do I got left? I only got 10 minutes left. Okay. Uh, overthrowing the Medes. When Cyrus the Great ascended to the throne at 559 B.C., he was one of the many local rulers who owed allegiance to the mighty Medean empire. The Medean empire was at the time still used, still ruled by Cyrus grandfather Astagius. But it was unclear uh as to exactly how the hostilities broke out. While Astagius, I, I see, yeah, it is probably Astagius. I want to, I want to get somebody to Astagius chicken. Uh, Astagius sent his army to attack Cyrus. It was under the command of Harpagus. If the legend starts to be believed, Harpagus had a reason to hate Astagius. Uh, yeah, obviously he made him eat his goddamn son. And encouraged Cyrus to revolt. Harpagus then defected to Cyrus and brought half of his army with him. The war against the Medes lasts for three years, 533 to 550 B.C. And ended with the Persians capturing the Medean cavalry at Bactana. Um, Cyrus spared Astagius's life and married Amatis, one of his daughters, which pacified the Basrians, Parthians and Saka. Who were the former vassals of the Medes, uh which the conquest of Media, Cyrus was able to unite the Persian people with himself as their king. Okay. Cyrus here. Hmm. So what you telling, telling me? Wasn't the great love of his life, what was her, what's the bitch name? Cassadane? Cassandane? And now you're saying that Amatis, he was, he was busting inside that? Y'all need to get your facts straight. This is why, this is why I don't trust historians. That's why I gotta make your own shit up. That's why you gotta make your own shit up. Uh, that's good when it tickle yourself. Okay, what's this last part? Um, let's see here. Damn, I gotta, I gotta wash my eyes out. Okay, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. And I'm good. Alright. Okay, back in this Cyrus the Great versus Croesus of Lydia. Sometime around 547 B.C., Croesus was famous, the famous wealthy king of Lydia. Attacked a Persian controlled city in central Anatolia. Cyrus the Great led his armies to Lydia and found the draw. So he basically beat the asses, right? Rather than executing his erstwhile foe, Cyrus spared Croesus's life and made him an advisor. Smart move. He obviously has talent. Unless I kill the man. Cause you know, he can appreciate greatness. And I guess to some extent, you know, the American military apparatus can recognize greatness too by taking in all those Nazis who did such a great job in that war that they definitely lost. So I don't even, whatever. You really gotta love America. Proud to be an American harbor red Nazi since 90, since 45. Damn, that'd be pretty dumb of me if I thought the World War II ended in 1990. I mean, it kind of did. In a way, if you think of it in a certain way. And my, my cannon, you gotta make your own shit up. Rather, yeah, so yeah, he was liberation of Babylon. Uh, Cyrus the Great captured the kingdom of Elam at Eastern Mesopotamia so that his kingdom now bore the neo-Babylonian empire. This time new Babylon empire was ruled by Nabon, Nabonitis, um, who came to power in a coup. And then had a fail falling out with the powerful priesthood of Marduk, one of Babylon's chief gods. All praise Marduk. Um, the result of, of these and other actions meant that Nabonitis was very unpopular with the Babylonian people who viewed Cyrus the Great as a potential liberator. Yeah, let's say Cyrus the Great was like the pillow under the woman's back uh of the situation. And the penis that is now has more room to operate to pleasure is, is the Persian army. Okay, that's an analogy. Uh, Cyrus invaded Babylonia in 539 B.C. and swiftly routed the Babylonian army in a short battle on the banks of the Euphrates River. Nabonitis fled as Cyrus approached the city of Babylon itself. Babylon was one of the largest cities of ancient Near East. Just call it West Asia, man. Stop being so west eccentric, um boasting both the size of population and impressive defenses. The Persians captured the city by diverting the Euphrates into a nearby canal which allowed to wade through the water. Right through the, right through the riverbed and the city at night. Babylon thus fell out of fight and Cyrus prevented his troops from sacking the city. Nabonitis surrendered shortly thereafter and Cyrus gained control of all of Mesopotamia, Syria and the Levant. His reign empire was now the largest the world had ever seen. Death and burial. Sometimes Cyrus the Great came to consult with the Masagete, a nomadic confederation in Central Asia. Uh, Cyrus first proposed a marriage between marriage to the Masag, Masagetai queen Tamiris. Yeah, she, Tamira said that was a rough bitch. So he was really taking one for the fucking team by marrying Tamira. So I gotta, I'm literally looking at like a little image here, Tamira. I only know her from Civ 6, but I imagine she was a rough looking bitch. Um, I don't know. I sometimes I forget they didn't have pictures back then. So yeah, there's, there's literally no telling what she looked like. I don't know. She could have been bad though. Central Asians now are pretty good looking. I mean, they're probably the hottest people on earth. Because you're, you're mixing Chinese and Russian. Like come, I mean, I know it's not that, but the same sort of like uh, but you get what I'm saying. You, you have the, you have the East Asiatic, some of the East Asiatic features, but you also have some of that Eastern European features and, and they, they all still, you know, they, after cruise ship, them bitches were eating corn. So they got thickness in all the right areas. So you have a modern shape, you have a modern type of shape bitch and you have East Asian and Eastern European features? You telling me I'm getting a blonde Chinese bitch with a, with a thick ass? Yeah. It's not how sexual I can be, even though like my penis is not working. It has not gotten hard in at least five years, but anyways. A Persian army was the uh, two sides engaged in battle. Exact details aren't clear, but appears the Persian army was defeated and he was killed. Damn. According to one account, after the battle, the body of Cyrus was brought forward to Myris who had it beheaded. She didn't dip the head in a vessel blood, a symbolic act of revenge, as Cyrus was said to have killed her son earlier through an act of deception. After Cyrus the Great died sometime around 53529 B.C., his remains were interred in his capital city Pasargadae. Through the city, though the city is now in ruins, the tomb self has survived. Made of limestone and consists of triangular, a triangular base followed by pyramidal succession. Smaller levels, the structure is curtailed by an edifice with an arch roof composed of a pyramid shaped stone and a small opening or window inside, on, on the side. Within the tomb, Cyrus the Great was buried in a golden coffin resting on a table with the golden supports. According to the sources, the tomb was filled with other luxurious items and was surrounded by a beautiful garden. Above the tomb was inscribed the words, "Oh man, whoever you are and wherever you come from, for I know you will come. I am Cyrus, who won the Persians' there empire. Do not therefore begrudge me this bit of earth that covers my bones." They may have not had pictures back then, but they had like um microphones and stuff and electronics. So we got the little audio clip there of Cyrus saying that after he died. So yeah, so we know, so now that we learned how awesome Cyrus the Great was um and his downfall. He died, even though he, he died in battle. He died like he was 70. That is, that's not bad at all in my opinion. Not bad at all. Um, I just, I guess the main lesson of this one is that uh, recognize greatness. Cultivate greatness. Don't be a scared, don't be a scaredy cat when it comes to greatness. Because no one needs that. We need a hero. He's got. Because no one needs that. We need a hero. He's gotta be strong, he's gotta be tough, he's gotta be whatever that song said. Um, he's gotta be white, gotta have blue eyes, he's gotta be airy. I'm looking for a hero. Something like that. He's, my hero basically has to look like Dolph Lundgren. Uh, I have anything else to say? I guess not, but I feel like this one was shorter than every, all the other ones, but hey, stuff uh goes by fast when you're having fun. Oh, wait a second, I'm reading here that he conquered vast territories from modern Turkey to modern Oman. Cyrus freed the Jewish people from the Babylonian kingdom, ending an era of Babylonian captivity on the exile of the Jews? He also issued the world's first human rights charter to protect religion. Fuck out of here. This is okay. So now I'm about to talk to my friend about, I'm talking to fucking Arpa Andy about this one. Cuz this might have been the start of something nasty, but we'll have to get him here some other time. Anyways, I'll leave you at that. Thank you so much for listening. See you later.